Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board. It's Thursday, February 21st, 2019, and the opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2019 Agenda Resolution of the Regularly Scheduled Meetings of the Princeton Planning Board. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and is to be maintained throughout the year by transmitting a copy of such schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and Comcast Media. A copy has been filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the seventh day of December 2018. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution appeared in the December 14, 2018 edition of the Princeton Packet. Do you call the roll, please?
Ms. Cepesoli? Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sax?
Here.
Mr. Stankiewicz?
Here.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Here.
Mrs. Alman?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mrs. Gunning?
Here.
Mr. Oakman? Mr. McGowan?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have a couple of announcements. This Saturday, that's the 23rd of February, at 10:00 in the morning, at the Erdman Center, 20 Library Place, there'll be a neighborhood meeting. This is in connection with the seminary redevelopment. On Thursday, the 28th of February, that's next week, at 9:00 in the morning, there's a Master Plan Committee meeting that's on the Community Facilities Element Discussion with the Board of Education Representatives, and that's in Meeting Room A, which is the room next to this main meeting room. Anyone else have any announcements? Anyone? All right. If there's nothing in form of announcements, let's go on to the findings of fact. Let's start with the Princeton Day School. This is from the meeting of January 17th of this year. It was an amended major site plan with variance.
Yeah. I recuse myself on this application because my daughter works for PDS, so I'll recuse myself from any discussion of the findings.
Thank you. Are there any additions, corrections? Anyone? Hearing none.
I move approval. Gail Alman?
Second.
David Cohen?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Alman, and the second was?
The set top.
Okay.
Give it to Mr. Cohen.
Okay. Mr. Cohen seconded this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. The second findings of fact is Fox &amp; Fox Development, LLC. This is from December 6th of last year. It was a minor subdivision with variances, 29 Snowden Lane. Any additions, corrections?
I have a couple.
Go ahead.
So, item Q under Stormwater Management, page 7, calls for roof leaders and sump pump to discharge for both proposed lots shall be tied into the municipal storm sewer system. I'd like to revise that to read the dry well overflow discharge for both proposed lots shall be tied into the municipal storm sewer system. The stormwater plan that we saw at the meeting showed the roof leaders tying into the dry well, so I'd like to recognize that, and essentially the same thing, but saying it's only for overflow. The second item is that item D, which is on page 6, refers to two trees located in the side yard shall be preserved in the area shall be regraded as necessary to do so. I want to be a bit more specific and suggested the following language. The two trees in the west side yard of lot 4.02, closest to the proposed house and shown as to remain on the tree replacement plan, shall be preserved and the surrounding areas shall be regraded as necessary to do so. I just thought it was a little bit vague, saying the two trees in the side yard without more specificity.
Can you give that language to?
It's already been given to.
Great. All right.
Wait, just one more.
All right.
Well, actually, I checked with Jack West, and both because of the significant regrading that was requested and the changes in planting and rain gardens, I wanted to have the Landscape Subcommittee involved in the review of those design changes, and he was okay with that, so.
Where is that in the?
There's an item I for the existing grading and proposed grading for each lot shall be subject to review and approval by the land use engineer, and I'm suggesting that it be review and approval by the site plan, the Landscape Subcommittee and the land use engineer.
Subcommittee review on here.
And then item O, I'm sorry, N, is the one that deals with plantings in the rain gardens, and I, again, suggest be subject to review and approval by the Landscape Subcommittee and the land use engineer.
Anybody, any other changes, corrections? All right. Would someone like to move this with those additions and changes?
I would be happy to move it.
Okay, it's been moved. Is it second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. Now, that brings us up to the minutes of February 7th of this year. It's a little more current than we usually are. This was sent to you electronically, so I hope you've all gotten it, had a chance to look at it. Were there any additions and corrections? Anyone? No? If there are no additions and corrections, would someone like to move this?
I'll move it.
Thank you, Ms. Alman. Is there second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay. That brings us to the discussion item for this evening. This is an ordinance referral, and it involves increasing the permitted floor area ratio for laboratory research uses in OR 2 and amending sections 10B 241, 10B 246N, and 10B 268. I think you had a memo from Mr. La Place, and would you like to start us off on that and tell us what it's about?
Thank you. What you see before you in the memo is a recap of what we put together talking to Church and Dwight, who came to the municipality interested in having the floor area ratio increased in this section of the OR 2 zone, and it was basically to match some of the investment that they want to make in Princeton at this site and to make the site more up-to-date and more economically viable. In the past, there was a floor area ratio of 10%, which was as of right, and then you've got smaller increments of larger FAR based on the amount of laboratory and research activity in the building. It went from, if you were, 25% of the building was laboratory and research, you got 11% floor area ratio, and it went up to, if you're 40% of the building laboratory and research, you could get 13% floor area ratio. And what we're doing now is, sometime later, now that some of the factors that influence that criteria are no longer in place, there's no problems with traffic congestion in the area, which was a concern then, with infrastructure, water supply, and issues like that, it really seems to make sense at this time. The 2017 Master Plan reexamination raised the concern of the municipality that areas such as this office area along Bun Drive, as well as the nearby Princeton Shopping Center, were really areas of concern in terms of making them economically viable. So this seems like a very practical and well-thought-out procedure to take to make this site grow in a way that we'd like to see it grow in terms of laboratory research use.
Hi there. Questions about this? Just go ahead.
I just had a quick question about one item that you didn't really address in your summary, which was the section that limited use of public water that you suggest, or I guess staff concurred could be deleted from the ordinance. And the question I had was, the explanation seemed to suggest that the reason that this was put in was because there were not utilities installed on Bun Drive at the time, and I'm trying to figure out how they would have used public water at all if there weren't utilities in place on Bun Drive.
My understanding from the information that I've reviewed is that there were limited facilities. There was limited water capacity at the time.
So the utility's been upgraded since then?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, actually, Bun Drive wasn't even there.
Correct.
For a good part of it, so there weren't that many buildings out there to use water.
Right. That was part of the incomplete infrastructure in that area.
But there must have been some public water, or else the language doesn't make sense.
Well, there was intention to build the road.
Well, I think, actually, my recollection is there was public water out Harrison Street so they could get to it.
Extend it from there.
So they could get to it.
Okay.
Could have extended it. Any other comments, questions?
The revised definition of laboratory research is, I just really just had a very difficult time slogging my way through that, and I wonder whether we can somehow break it up, somehow simplify it so that it's, I mean, I just really, I read it and rewritten it, and I just still am not sure of it, and is there any way to make it more plain Englishy? And there was actually one part, five lines down toward the end of the line, where the red text says, "may include the engineering and product development, comma, including but limited to the following." So I wanted to know whether you meant to say including but not limited, since that's normally the way that language flows.
Yeah. Good question, but that's part of the original language, not part of the change.
I think that's correct.
Right. Well, you could have dropped one without realizing it, but.
The changes that we're making along the way, I think you're right. I think we meant to say not limited. I hear what you're saying. This is, it seems like a very detailed definition, and our challenge was to try to be as detailed as we could for the site, but also to not limit it in terms of how technology changes and how research.
Yeah, totally, totally get that. I'm not looking for simplicity of the concepts, but just clarity of how the, I think it's one sentence that's about 15 lines long here, and I'm not, you know.
No, I understand what you're saying.
I don't mean to be smacking anybody down.
Nope.
I just, I really, I found it really difficult to make my way through.
And that's helpful feedback, because this has to be a useful, right.
So if it's already in an introduced ordinance, maybe now is not the, unless you want to do this including but not limited to, if that's what's meant to be said there. But in general, I think the more we can do to make the language really clear, detailed or not, detail is great, but clarity is also really important.
And we certainly can, we can address that when we're working on the definitions as well, but we'll make that minor change that you mentioned, because I think that was a mistake on our part. You know, there were a lot of cooks in the kitchen on this one, so I think that's kind of how it resulted the way it did.
Anyone else?
Actually, just one other very minor grammatical or editorial thing on the third line of the definition, where it says, "the natural, physical, or social sciences," I assume you mean natural, comma, physical, or social sciences?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I mean, I must say, when I looked at that, I would have liked to have added biological or biochemical sciences to the list, since that's really kind of the hot research item around Route 1 now, but perhaps this covers all of that.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I had that exact same thought, but I assumed it was under natural.
I think that was our meaning.
But I defer to the scientists among us, too.
To keep it broad, yeah.
Yeah.
And since we're looking at this for how it dovetails with the master plan, anybody have any thoughts on that? We're supposed to let the council know. This, when it goes back, will need a supermajority because it's not concurrent with all of the master plan, or?
No, it would only need a majority of the fully authorized membership, and the reasons for adopting the ordinance in spite of the inconsistency with the master plan would have to be in the minutes and in the resolution adopted by council.
Perhaps you could say it again.
When the report goes back to the council as to consistency with the master plan, assuming that the board makes a recommendation, council would not need a supermajority, even though there is an inconsistency. They would need a majority of the fully authorized membership, and the reasons for adopting the ordinance in spite of the inconsistency with the master plan would have to be stated in the resolution adopted by the council, and it would have to be in the minutes as well.
Better? Okay. Was council aware that it was inconsistent with the master plan?
I was not personally aware, no.
I think we were, but the reexam report specifically mentions this as an area, so I think that we thought that that covered us in terms of the master plan.
Yeah, I think it's important to consider that, since it's the later document, the reexamination report from 2017, it's pointing in a direction that this is consistent with in terms of treating those areas a little differently and investing in them.
Okay. I'm sorry, Jerry, did you have?
Michael, I was just going to ask, I thought it was a little strange having the social sciences as part of the definition. So this could, they could be what we would call a lab for observation for social science purposes. It just seemed to be different than everything else that's in the definition. Just wanted to see what the thinking was.
Yeah, it's, the way it was explained to us when we spoke to Representatives Church and Dwight, that the area, the idea of disciplined sharing information, sharing space, more interaction, people not working in silos as they did in the past, less specialized areas, more common areas, both for research and just sharing of ideas. So that's what this was supposed to reflect. That's the new space and the renovated space within the facility.
You know, I'm comfortable with it because of the qualifying clause afterwards, which says spaces which required controlled conditions. So, you know, psychological sciences, for instance, will often do experiments that require controlled conditions, you know. Economics doesn't require that, as far as I know. But, yeah, I think that if you're talking about a lab space for social sciences, why not include it?
Okay. If there are no further comments on this, one of the things I would like to do is, we have a few members of the public here, I'd like to give them a chance to comment, so let me just open the meeting to public comment. If you'll come up to the microphone, give your name and so on. Or do you all work for Church and Dwight? Are you sure? Okay. Well, seeing no one, let me close the public portion, and I guess we're ready to make a recommendation to send this back to council. Someone would like to do that?
I'm still not 100% clear what we're doing when we send back. Are we recommending that it be deemed sufficiently consistent with the master plan? I mean, since our report says it's not really consistent with the master plan, and what are we?
Well, I guess that the question is, do we think that this is a good change to the ordinance and that it's worth having council go beyond what the master plan says, because this is, this harmonizes with the later reports on the master plan and with the interest in keeping ratables up and so on? So.
But David, just to elaborate a little bit, although the municipal land use law talks in terms of, on referral, in evaluation by the planning board of the consistency with the master plan, the board can certainly go beyond that and just, you know, recommend the adoption of the ordinance, but it should address the inconsistency with the master, no, the inconsistency with the master plan as well.
Someone want to try this?
Okay, I'm going to move that we return to council with a recommendation for adoption, finding it compatible with the latest reexamination of the master plan.
I'll second that.
All right. It's moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? And we will draft a memo to that effect if it passes. Do you want to call the roll?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Stankiewicz?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mrs. Alman?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. All right. So. The next item on the agenda is a hearing. This is the trustees of Princeton University. It's a concept site plan, and since my husband is an employee of Princeton University, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Gail Alman. She will share this part of it.
Thank you.
For those of you on the board who haven't sat on a concept review, I'll just say that this is really a discussion item. We do not vote. We ask questions, make comments, but it is not, at this point, a voting procedure. So, shall I start with you, Mr. La Place?
Being the newest person in this room at the Princeton, that's my understanding. I'll give you a brief introduction, some context. This is a concept review for two new residential colleges at the university on their main campus. The proposal is consistent with the current campus master plan. It involves an area, the project itself involves an area of about 11 and 1/2 acres. The location is this dashed area that was in the set of plans given to us. It's basically south of Poe Field and north of South, above South Drive, north of South Drive, in an area where there are currently athletic facilities. Those athletic facilities will be relocated to other areas of the university campus. The proposal is to house, actually, it's, each of the two colleges will house 500 students, so the total is for 1,000 capacity, and there's two reasons for that. One is because of the proposed increase in enrollment that the university is working on, as well as to have swing space, a place to put students so that other older residence halls can be renovated over time. So that's the concept. They're separate buildings, as seen above grade, but they are connected underground and at the grade with common areas for infrastructure, dining, circulation areas, loading zones, kitchens, things like that, which I'm sure the applicant will go into in greater detail. What else I wanted to tell you, there are no zoning issues as far as it's a permitted use in the E1 zone, and in case you're interested, the tallest structure is seven levels to a height of about 93 feet, which is within the restrictions of the zone. So that's sort of a brief overview. I don't know if there are any other questions. I could, I'm not sure how this is done, so maybe you can give me some guidance. Do you want staff comments now or later?
Generally, you would give them now.
Okay.
So.
Kind of get the discussion going, that's fine. We were interested in knowing whether the project will be LEED certified and at what level, if that's the idea here, so we'd like some details on that. We would like to know the number of onsite employees, and also how the employees will be provided with parking, both for bicycles, for automobiles, how they will access the site. We'd like to know more information about the actual architecture in detail of the project. Actually, I probably should show you some other details. This is the site plan, so you can see that within that area of the two colleges, one college and the second college, they're connected by a central spine, a circulation area of paths and landscaping and public areas, and then the shared dining areas and kitchen are at the central sections of the site. There's considerable landscaping proposed, which I'm sure the applicant will go into in greater detail. And we had some illustrations that you saw in your packet for the architecture, but it really wasn't detailed. We'd like to know how it complements the surrounding buildings on campus and what the design concept is for this particular set of residential colleges. What else? We also wanted to know if there's going to be any changes.
Christopher Degrzis from the law firm of Drinker Biddle and Reese here on behalf of the applicant trustees of Princeton University. Thank you, Michael, it was a, it was a good introduction. As you indicated, we're here on a concept plan, and for those of you that aren't aware, it's been sort of a university tradition, when we have a project, that's a larger project, we like to get before this board, before it's fully designed, before it's fully engineered, so we can get your feedback here, you know, if you have any concerns or issues, and listen to the public. So it's a really good process, gives us an opportunity to share vision with you. We may not have all the questions today, because like I said, this is concept, but we hope that, you know, we can answer what we can. So, we're looking forward to sharing this with you, and I would like to introduce university architect Ron McCoy, who can take you through the project.
Good evening.
Welcome, Ron.
Thank you. We have with us tonight Maitland Jones, a partner in Deborah Burke Partners, who have been our architects for the project. So when we get into any really detailed questions, Maitland can help answer those. Along with Deborah Burke Partners as the architect for the project, the landscape architect for this project is James Corner Field Operations. You may recall that Princeton typically has a single consulting landscape architecture firm that does all the landscape on the university campus. For the last 13 years, we had Michael Van Valkenburg doing that landscape. As part of just a general need to, desire to refresh our consultants, which we feel we need to do on a regular basis, we now are working with James Corner Field Operations for all of our projects. You may know their work from the High Line in New York City and the Sugar Refinery, other projects. So we're very excited to have Deborah Burke doing a fantastic job on this project and assisted on the landscape design by James Corner Field Operations. So I'm gonna briefly, I think, give you a general overview of the project, explain it, and I'm gonna try to explain it as much as possible in the context of the 2026 Campus Plan, so that you can understand how we have, how we've begun to move from the campus planning phase into the design of the specific facilities that we're, that we're working on. Let me make one thing, let me clarify one issue about the nature of the project, a question we often get. As Mr. La Place said, this, these are two colleges. Each college is 500 students for a total of 1,000, but half of these students are existing students and half will be for the enrollment growth. So the enrollment growth is only 50% of what we're accommodating here. That extra capacity, as was said, gives us the ability to renovate or replace dated facilities, such as dormitories in the existing Wilson College, and those buildings that are no longer suited for our residential life program. To move this along, I'm gonna refer here to the overall plan illustration from the, from the 2026 Campus Plan, and maybe with a reminder that our campus plan is a framework. It doesn't predict or guarantee that we're gonna do anything that's in the campus plan. What it provides is direction to us, to the institution, if and when strategic initiatives are decided upon, the campus plan provides guidance for how to execute those initiatives through the physical planning process. I've put a red dot on the plan here that just indicates where the residential colleges are located, and I've got the website link at the top of this slide, if you, if you want to remind yourselves where to go to have a look at the plan. This is quite a thorough document, and there's a legend that goes with this drawing that illustrates all the different projects that are, that are illustrated here. The 2026 Campus Plan highlighted three priority projects that would be, that would be executed. And we're very excited to come here tonight with the, a concept discussion about the first of those three priority projects. So this is, as we've said, the ability to expand the residential college portfolio and expand the student body by 10%. The other two projects that were identified of those three priorities, the second one is our new facilities for the School of Engineering and also a new initiative for environmental studies. We'll be back sometime later this year with, with those projects. And then, space to accommodate academic collaborations with corporate, government, nonprofit sectors in an expanded innovation ecosystem, and that refers to our development of the Lake Campus. We'll see some illustrations of that plan here tonight. This is a description of the value proposition that we have written for the residential colleges. We have set ourselves a discipline with all of the projects that we are launching in the capital, in the capital plan, to articulate a value proposition, which is a, a promise of expectations that the project will deliver. So this really tries to summarize the institutional priorities for the project. You can see some of the highlights here are to create a closely knit collaborative community of living, learning, socializing, and dining. And then each of these spheres will enhance the other. So dining offers a place to exchange of ideas and so on. Residential colleges are built to enhance student well-being, integrate living and learning, and foster community and responsibility. So these are the overall guidelines that we're, that we're trying to achieve, the strategic goals we're trying to achieve with the two residential colleges. This is a slide from the 2026 Campus Plan, and if you recall, when we presented the campus plan, we were careful to say that the illustrations of buildings that were incorporated in the campus plan were not designed. So we did this simply as a ability to test the capacity of the site south of Poe Field for two residential colleges. But it was, it was helpful for us to make sure that we had identified a site that we thought had the capacity, and it was a way of indicating in the campus plan some of the general overall character of the site development that we were anticipating. For a reminder, this is the site, as was described earlier by Mr. La Place, and you can see, this is south of Poe Field, and it is to the, just to help orient you, this is the new Lewis Center for the Arts complex under construction. This is the parking garage on the west side of the campus. This is Poe Field here, and then this is the site. You can see that we have on that site soccer field and softball field and our varsity tennis complex. Those facilities, in order to make room for the two residential colleges, will be relocated. And as we've said in the campus plan, our intention was to relocate at least softball and tennis to the new Lake Campus. The idea is to incorporate those athletic facilities into what we hope, what we're planning to be a vibrant mixed-use campus that will, in addition to the athletic facilities, will be built around graduate student housing and the spaces for collaboration with the partnerships that we, that I just briefly talked about. There will also be parking and transportation on the Lake Campus site. And this is a plan from the December 2017 Campus Plan, and I wanted to just share with you an update to that. This is a plan from a month ago, in January, that shows the evolution of that plan. We're still calling this a vision for the Lake Campus, but it's more refined. We have, following the development of the campus plan, we've hired another planning firm, SOM, working with James Corner Field Ops, to provide more detailed study of the Lake Campus master plan. So this is beginning to identify more closely the exact placement and footprint of the athletic facilities, the softball, the racket center, which includes varsity tennis, housing for the graduate students, and the collaboration buildings. Our plans are to submit this later in the spring to the town of West Windsor for a general development plan. And coming back then to the 2026 Campus Plan, on that theme of the providing capacity within these two buildings that will allow us to renovate some of the existing buildings, the campus plan gave direction about how the Wilson College site might get renovated or reconfigured. So some combination of new buildings and renovated buildings would allow us to achieve what we're calling here an east-west campus connector, which improves the intuitive understanding of the campus, the navigation of the campus, and creates another important east-west campus walk that goes from Washington Road to Elm Drive, connecting the Student Campus Center, which is around Frist Campus Center here, over to the main vehicular pathway through, through campus. So that's one of the possibilities of renovated or replaced facilities. I just wanted to show a few illustrations from the campus plan that might begin to answer some of the questions that were articulated at the beginning of the staff presentation. This one shows the cycling network, which also overlaps with the pedestrian network. This, this site is extremely well-located. It's really part of the existing fabric of the existing campus, and it's well-connected with pedestrian routes throughout the campus and also to cycling routes that exist and to connections to future campus expansion. There's a walkway I'll show you in a little bit, that is, we call it a Farren Walk, which comes off from the southeast corner of the site, connects to Faculty Road, connects over to the boathouse, but could also use by students to connect to Washington Road, crossing the lake at the existing bridge and accessing the Lake Campus through that, that pathway. This is another diagram from the 2026 Campus Plan, just illustrating the natural landscape. This is, the natural landscape and particularly the woodland fingers that come up through campus are really the defining characters of the Princeton campus. And one of the amazing opportunities we have with this development on the west side of that red circle, the west and southwest of that side, is to allow that woodland setting to become one of the character-defining features of the residential colleges. So we are carefully just going to be locating the college adjacent to that, that woodland condition and taking advantage of the beautiful character of that woodland, which has, has trails within it that come down to the lakeside graduate housing and to the recreational trails that, along the lake and the tow path. The third diagram I just wanted to illustrate here is the connection of the site to Tiger Transit. That was another point that was raised in some of the staff comments. Again, because this is a well-integrated site of the existing campus, it's connected to our Tiger Transit system. You may know that our undergraduate students are not allowed, they're only to bring cars to campus, so this is not a vehicular setting at all. Only by exception can students bring, bring a car to campus, and those, those automobiles are parked in, in parking lots that are used, or assigned specifically for the undergraduate students. So there'll be no additional vehicular traffic on campus as a result of this project. We, we have a very careful inventory of our cycling, cycling network and where bicycle, bike racks need to be located. It's, it's not as simple as X number of bicycle parking spaces per academic or residential building. It all has to do with how far away that residential building might be from the academic centers of the campus. This one's going to be at a periphery, a little bit like Forbes College, and so we have bike counts that are particularly related to where the residential colleges are going to be situated on campus, and we can calculate how many bike parking spaces we'll need from that kind of precedent. Nevertheless, we're very nimble with our bike parking spaces, and when we need more, we just add more. So we will take care of that, particularly since I ride my bike everywhere. Bike parking on campus is very important. Now, jumping into the, the project, this is now the evolution of the plan as we have today. You'll see that on the drawing, on the, on the easel over here, we, we call them College VII and College VIII. College VII is the college on the western part of the site, which, which nits into that woodland condition that I described earlier. College VIII is the college on the eastern part of the site, and then the central space in between them, we're calling Campus Walk. Each college is a configuration of three-sided courtyards that are characteristic of forms of colleges on the Princeton campus. So this is picking up, in a contemporary version of an architectural language, a very rich tradition of architecture on campus. I'll explain in a few minutes, as I walk through the project, that another characteristic of the existing campus that's embedded in the design here is the sequence of pathways of, and portals into courtyards, from courtyard to courtyard. That kind of sequence of space, which characterizes the historic part of the campus, is captured here in these contemporary buildings. And maybe the third feature to talk about in terms of the architecture is just the configuration of the fingers of dormitories that you can see here. You can see that they are sort of articulated in small segments and narrow profiles. The buildings themselves are relatively narrow, and there's a lot of attention to the form and placement and massing of the buildings, so that they can, I think, resonate with the picturesque characteristics that are, that are typical on the, on the Princeton campus, on our architecture. This drawing illustrates two of the primary pedestrian pathways that I've already referred to, but gives you a better sense at this scale. On the east side of the camp, of the, of the complex of the two colleges, is a pathway that would go up from what we call South Drive up to Poe Field. This would be a fire lane. It also would be a way that students would access the site on move-in days, where a lot of students come to campus and have to unload cars quickly and conveniently to move into the dormitory rooms. It also then extends, this is that Farren Walk that I talked about. We call it Farren Walk because this is where Beatrix Farren, in her time on campus, had a, had greenhouses and several of the, many of the trees that are planted in this era were planted by Beatrix Farren. That pathway then gives access down to Faculty Road, which I said connects over to Washington Road Bridge and gives access to the Lake Campus. And then on the west side of the campus, this is a pathway that goes through the woodlands in a very beautiful natural trail, goes down to the lakeside graduate housing, which then can access the west side of the campus as well. So those are two of the primary pedestrian pathways on this part of the campus. This diagram is from a little bit earlier phase of the design, so some of the particular footprints have changed a bit, but it's a good diagram to describe the more internal network, just the hierarchy of pathways inside the, the two residential colleges. You'll see that coming through College VII is a portal and a passageway, and one of those pathways, it goes in and out of courtyards as it comes through the campus and connects to that walk that connects to the Farren Walk. Another portal through College VIII connects also to that central space, the Campus Walk, and also goes through the campus. And then you can see again those, those two main north-south pathways on the east and west sides of the campus that give access to the different courtyards of the, of the colleges. In the center of the two colleges is what I've referred to as College Walk. We'll have some renderings of that in a little bit, but the College Walk, the character of the walk and the landscape change from north to south. There's a topographic change of a full level plus from north to south, so that the buildings are a little bit taller at the southern part of the site. The buildings, in the northern part of the site form quadrangles with greens, which is very characteristic of the Princeton campus. In the middle is a, is a courtyard that is sunken, and that's the central courtyard for the two dining halls. Each college has a dining hall. College Dining Hall VIII is on this side of that courtyard. The dining hall for College VII is on the west side, and the service for that, for the, for the, for the servery and the kitchen comes from a pathway, the same pathway which is shared on the east side of the campus. The other primary features of the landscape are the, those semi-private courtyards that are shaped by the C-shaped configuration of the dormitories. And as I mentioned earlier, there's, there'll be a slightly different characteristic of those two courtyards. Those on the west... There's a topographic change of a full level plus from north to south, so that the buildings are a little bit taller at the southern part of the site. The buildings, in the northern part of the site, form quadrangles with greens, which is very characteristic of the Princeton campus. In the middle is a courtyard that is sunken, and that's the central courtyard for the two dining halls. Each college has a dining hall. College Dining Hall Eight is on this side of that courtyard. The dining hall for College Seven is on the west side, and the service for that, for the servary and the kitchen comes from a pathway, the same pathway which is shared on the east side of the campus. The other primary features of the landscape are those semi-private courtyards that are shaped by the C-shaped configuration of the dormitories. And as I mentioned earlier, there'll be a slightly different characteristic of those two courtyards. Those on the west will be nestled into the woodlands that are part of the heritage of the campus. And on the east, a more architectural treatment of bosques, of trees organized in bosques that define courtyards for the students to socialize in. So those will be, each one of these gardens will be a sort of unique design that will kind of establish the character of the different courtyards and provide additional variety in the design of the campus. This is getting a little bit detailed. I just wanted to show, this is a ground-level plan, and the point of this is to illustrate that at the Poe Field edge of the two colleges, this is really where we're creating gateways and portals and entrances to the two colleges, and bringing together at those northernmost pieces all of the primary college programs. So the head of college, the college offices, common rooms, special rooms that provide spaces for the programs of the colleges are located in each one of the colleges, in College Seven here with its portal and College Eight here with its portal. So those are the public spaces and the places of arrival. So when students arrive at the campus, at the colleges, they have those social and common spaces, and then as they move through the college complexes, they evolve into more residential settings for each of the colleges, and on the upper levels they're residential. One of the goals of the project, it's a very Princeton term, we wanted to create what's called a slippered college, where all the different dormitories are connected indoors, so the students don't have to go outside to go from one dormitory wing to another dormitory wing. So all these spaces are connected internally at the lower level. When you get to the upper levels, these are where the individual floors of the dormitory buildings are discreet and very intimate so that we can support the kind of community and social interaction that we aspire to in the value proposition. So these, each of these floors might have 20 to 25 different beds for the students, arranged in a variety of configurations that are designed to reflect the sort of aspirations for creating community among first-year, second-year juniors and seniors in the academic community. So they're tailored to the students and their experience as they move through the university-college system. This drawing illustrates the scale of the buildings on Poe Field. Poe Field is a, as the campus has continued to go to the south over the decades, Poe Field is a unique and very special space. It's the primary space for informal campus recreation, and it really creates a unique setting. The campus, when you look at it closely, has a number of different districts. Each one of those different districts has a particular scale and character and quality, and they all add up in a cohesive way to create the overall campus. In this particular setting, you can see that the buildings on the right are the existing buildings of Scully Hall and Bloomberg Hall, and they are typically four stories. Some little bits of them pop up to a fifth story or to a tower, as shown here at Scully Hall. And the new colleges here on the left side, or the south side of Poe Field, and they go from four, five, to six stories facing onto Poe Field. In the very far distance, this is the tower at the Graduate College at 173 feet. This is a view from the northern edge of Poe Field, looking across the Poe Field as it exists today, and you can see in this view the softball field over on the right and the soccer field on the left, the soccer stadium. This is a view of the residential colleges as they would appear on the site. As I said, they go from four stories to five stories to six stories across that facade. The portals to College Seven are right here. There's a portal to College Eight right there. We've thinned out the trees a little bit. There's always a, the architects want to show fewer trees, the landscape architects want to show more trees, but we've sort of tried to find a happy medium enough that would show the architecture but still give you a sense of the kind of landscape that we would have at that edge between Poe Field and the buildings. These buildings are masonry. We are continuing to work on the brick masonry color, pattern, texture, variety, but they will be very much in the tradition of masonry, of tone and texture and color that provide the sort of craft and elegance that characterize the existing campus. This is a rendering of the view into College Seven. This little inset plan here on the lower left shows you where you are. You're just about to leave Poe Field and arrive into the portal that enters into College Seven. On the left is one of the premier spaces of the college, which is the large common space, which will act as a sort of glassy beacon facing onto Poe Field. We really, we like, on Poe Field now on campus, there's the Icon Laboratory that has a glass, curved glass facade that looks out onto Poe Field, and the transparency of that building and the way the building allows students and the community to engage between indoors and outdoors is something that we wanted to achieve in these buildings. One of the characteristics of our existing fabric of existing, of colleges is that they tend to be very opaque, literally opaque. You can't tell what's going on inside them. They have a kind of sense of privacy and separation. We really wanted to break that down with this new generation of colleges and make them more open, welcoming, and inviting. And along this view, you can see then through the portal into one of those courtyards, through another portal that would then take you out into the Campus Walk central space, which is the common space of the two colleges. We are now, this is a rendering from within the two colleges, so again, from this inset, we're just, we've just entered the central space, Campus Walk from Poe Field. You're looking at College Seven on your right, College Eight on your left. This is a sort of grassy quad area, which is very characteristic of the existing campus. And just over the edge and the horizon of the perspective, this would be a, the overlook into the sunken courtyard, which is the courtyard around which the two dining halls organize themselves. If we go to the southern part of the site and look back to the north, so here's the inset, so now we're at the south end, looking up through Campus Walk. In this case, College Seven is on your left, College Eight is on your right. You see back toward the Poe Field in the northern part of the campus, and you're getting a sense of the topography as the ground slopes away at the southern part of the site, but ramps up with accessible pathways throughout the design of the complex. Over here, you can't quite see it, but we're looking down to a courtyard that has a culinary garden that's adjacent to the kitchen and the servary that serves into the dining hall, so the growing of food is an opportunity that we're going to be able to take advantage of in this college. And then at the far southern end of the site, looking back across the site toward the, both of the college, primarily toward College Seven, we're still, as has been said, this is a concept design hearing. We're still developing the design, and I'd say that one of the things that's going to be slightly different as we move forward is that we realize that we have a lot of stormwater obligations and we have very ambitious stormwater goals. So the southern part of the site will probably be rain gardens that will be used to retain water on site, but still create a wonderful landscape setting for the colleges and for the campus. And then looking back at a nice twilight view, that same view back from Poe Field across to the south, and a little bit better illustration of the glassiness and openness and transparency that we want to achieve to create that welcoming environment at the ground level. On sustainability, we know this was another question. The university has adopted some very ambitious 30-year targets, and each one of the buildings we're designing is designed to contribute to those 30-year targets, including carbon neutrality within, by 2046. The building will be designed to meet a LEED Gold certification under the LEED Version Four guidelines. And then you can see a very thorough list of sustainable elements and features to be incorporated into the design. I'm trying to think of some of these that are really worth pointing out. I think one of the most important ones is actually this passive solar designs. We have a sort of mantra in the design of all of our facilities that they are passive first, so the orientation, I should have pointed that out, they're all have a nearly ideal orientation for the, for solar exposure, so we can control the light, so that the buildings themselves, by their, by their basic design and passive orientation, reduce heat loads on them. And then we followed it up with the next bullet, which is a high-performance, high-performance envelope. You can see energy-efficient HVAC systems. The buildings, over time, all of the buildings on campus will move from a steam to a geothermal-exchange hot water energy source for heating and cooling. On this particular project, we're able to take advantage of some, what we say, call here as free heat, which really is taking the energy from the, from the storm, from the steam condensate, which is coming back from the northern part of the campus, into the cogeneration plant in the southern part of the campus. We can grab the excess heat in that and use that as an energy source for the colleges. There was a comment earlier about the waste management system. We are, we're designing into this facility the ability to sort floor trash in rooms on individual floors, which allows us to sort our waste so that we can control our waste stream in ways that we haven't been able to do as efficiently on other projects. And you can see other things on this list. So we're very excited about the ambitions and opportunities we have for sustainable design on the project. So I think that gives you an overview, and we're happy to take your questions and see what we can learn more and come back with, as we get ready for making our final submissions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Just for the record, I want to note that Mr. Chexarni has also recused himself. So, board members, any questions? I can tell everybody's just dying to. David?
Well, I'm not dying to, but I'll get things started. I really actually like the design a lot. It sort of reminds me, actually, of the University of Virginia's original campus with the lawn and the gardens behind, and so very appropriate for an academic setting. One of the things I particularly like from the renderings of the lawn, Poe Lawn, is that it really energizes the space, and I think it's inaccurate, you know, it's not just an idealized version, but, you know, when I've been down there, it's a beautiful space, but it's not very energized. It's not, there's not a lot of occupancy of the space, and I think that citing these colleges in proximity to that is really great, because it could be almost, become like sort of the Great Lawn in Central Park, where you really are providing a population who will be convenient to it and really want to, want to use that beautiful space. So those are my first reactions.
Are you going to introduce Mr. Jones as a possible commentator on this, or?
I'd be happy to.
That might be a nice thing.
Okay. Want to come up here?
May I come? Thank you.
Nice to have you here. Now, we now have the architect as well, so if you have questions or thoughts that you'd like to put at this stage, it's a good time to do it.
So, a question about the crossings, the connectivity, I was impressed with the slide that showed the bike and pedestrian interactions, but how do you see this with the crossings of Faculty Road to get to the Lake Campus and then over across to West Windsor? Do you see additional crossings of Faculty Road, and how's that going to work?
I don't, we're not imagining additional crossings at Faculty Road. We recently upgraded the traffic pedestrian crossing around the perimeter of the campus, including the one that the Farren Walk crosses Faculty Road at. So we would, we would see that as being the primary pathway for the, for the future. We don't, we don't think that the demand would be any more than what we have on campus right now. There's a, there's a pathway on the northern side of Faculty Road that can come over to the intersection, then cross with the light, or students can cross with the rapid flashing beacon here, or they can cross with the rapid flashing beacon at the, at the roundabout. So I don't think that the demand for pedestrians and bikes would be larger than that. I should also say that you may be familiar with the fact that we are, as part of the campus plan, we also have planned a flyover that we are moving forward with and would be making applications for permissions for that in the future. But there's, that flyover is a very safe connection across the lake to the Lake Campus. That would be open to the public. It's accessible in terms of the topography. It's frankly quicker, less distance, and safer than any way of crossing the lake. So we think that, that would be an additional path, and that's probably the, absolutely the safest path for all the community to use to cross the lake.
And Ron, that'll be just a pedestrian flyover, no vehicles?
Absolutely. Pedestrians and bicycles, yeah.
And weren't there golf carts? Golf carts as well?
Yeah.
I do have a few things. I think early on, you mentioned in passing that these might take students out of facilities that, and I may have misinterpreted, but that you may phase out other buildings that are currently dorms. Is that, is that part of the plan too?
Since it's campus planning, I'm going to take that, that one also. Yes, that's, that's the intent. This, this capacity, since half the students are for growth, half, half the students allow us to go back into our existing inventory of buildings and renovate them or, and/or replace them. So we have, we are, have not made specific plans for starting those projects yet, but we know which ones are in most need of, of either renovation or that are sort of least able to serve the kind of campus community we want to create in our residential college system.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to get clear that that was sort of part of all of this. And I assume we'll have a copy of this PowerPoint? I didn't get to read all of the finest print, especially on the sustainability page, all those.
Eileen has a, Eileen has a.
But I'd love to refer them at some point.
Eileen has a copy, yeah.
Okay. And then I just wanted to encourage you to think in, this is a water-related question of, in addition to rain gardens, and I noted green roofs on, that were mentioned, potential for capturing and reusing for irrigation, for gray water, for, you know, other kinds of reuse, such that there's no runoff generated from the area that you're developing.
Yeah, that principle of no runoff is a guiding one in this project, and we are studying systems for capturing water, detaining it, and even reusing water from various systems for irrigation and other stuff.
Great. Thanks.
Well, I, I have a sort of a rambling question. This board has considered, over the many years that I've been on it, any number of dormitories, and I've never known exactly how, what we approved in terms of the use So I thought I'd ask you, Mr. Jones, what you are thinking about in terms of how the students use the rooms, the hallways, the open spaces? I mean, is that, are you already on board with that kind of thinking now, and what has been your thinking on this?
Yeah, let me preface my comment by observing, I lived in beautiful dorms that I now learn are considered quite deficient, 30 years later.
There you go.
I'm surprised to learn this. I'm surprised to learn this. The first, so we have completed two phases of design, the first of which was a concept and programming phase with six months of intake with both, with members of the Princeton community, both students and res life administration. And we've learned to joke that these projects have been designed from the inside out so far with a focus almost exclusively on the student experience. So the configurations you see in the floor plans, in fact, the very footprints of the buildings themselves are centered around a couple of very specific student outcomes that come from that research we did with Princeton at the beginning. And they are primarily to size social groups within the residential spaces around those cohesive halls we know work. One is the residential advisee group, as Ron said, of about 17 to 22 students. And the other objective is to not quarantine those RA groups in the building where upper-class students, juniors and seniors, don't encounter them. So the other objective has been to mix room types on floors to make four-year affiliation in the residential colleges attractive to juniors and seniors. So if these guiding principles work out, students of different class years will live together in harmony on the same floors in social units that don't feel too big. Another principle has been to limit floor sizes so that we don't have long or lightless hallways. So a lot of attention has been paid to the common space on those floors, positioning them in hallway so that there's light at the ends of halls and that they're common spaces at points of arrival, which in our plans are typically at the middle of the hall, not the ends, which is itself a little bit unusual.
Thank you. David?
I just had a couple of comments along lines of sustainability goals. I noticed in the, in the page that you had about that, you talked about LEED Gold or equivalent, and I just want to encourage you to actually pursue the LEED certification. I'm sure your experience has been that there's a lot of great ideas that get lost between concept and realization when you're not held to the concrete goals of a LEED, an actual LEED certification process. And I guess the other comment is that, you know, I've been working with the Climate Action Plan Group, and we've had representation from the university as well, and you have some very ambitious goals in terms of carbon neutral footprint by, by some date.
2046.
Yeah. So it certainly seemed that any building you build going forward should do its very best to be net zero. I'm not sure if that was one of the items on the list, but...
Net zero is not on the list, but attends to your previous suggestion and recommendation. These, these will be certified.
And we think they put you, they advanced Princeton's goals towards that 2046 objective.
Mr. Quinn?
Just like to say, to echo what, what Ms. Alman said, bravo. Very impressive. Also like to thank the university for the transparency and this open process through the campus planning process. Some of you know that Ron has been several times to the Environmental Commission to talk about the sustainability, the sustainability factors involved in this, and thank you.
I don't know whether there are any members of the public who are here who would like to comment. If so, here's an opportunity to do so.
We did send out hundreds of letters. Unfortunately, this is on a 100-acre lot or so, so.
All right, I, I see, well, it was advertised in the paper, so I thought there would be a crowd here wanting to know, but apparently there isn't. So with that, I'll say thank you very much for the presentation and the project.
We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Is it appropriate to have a motion to adjourn?
Second motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.